This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. I'd like to call it order the City of Hassel's Capital Improvements Advisory Committee Meeting. Today's date is August 30th, 2022. The time is 6:30 PM. We do have a proper forum present for this evening's meeting. If anybody has filled out a citizen participation card, please make sure we get those so that we can give you an opportunity to speak. First item for discussion is the meeting minutes from our regular meeting that occurred on November 16th, 2021. Are there any comments or changes that anybody feels are necessary for those meeting minutes? Okay, if there's no revisions to the minutes, is there a motion to approve? The only comment I would make is, and I don't know that it requires any changes, but under members absent, I was not there. But you also don't have me in members present, so I don't know that that's an issue. But my name's not listed as members present, so I don't know that that requires a revision, but I would like to point that out. Thank you. Is our motion to approve? There a second?
Second.
There's motion to approve and it's been seconded. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item 4, Consider an Act Regarding the Recommendation to City Council for Approval of the Fiscal Year 2022 Biannual Report. Begin with a presentation.
Okay. Chairman, committee members, good evening. My name is Roman. I am with Belchef and Associates, the City Engineers Office. And I'm going to give you the update on this biannual report that you have in the package. I see that the first page is the actual recommendation letter. And we can go ahead and cover that first. And this is a standard report that you used seeing every six months that presented to you as required under the local government code. And the goal of which is to present the operations of the impact fee funds and also provide recommendations what those funds should be appropriated towards to. And the supporting documents that it has, the most supporting documents or three are the first supporting documents. It basically provides the breakdown of number of building permits that were issued slash and impact fees. Water and sewer has been collected and gives you the summary of number of those impact fees that's been collected, the amount, the number and such. It compares to compares those numbers that have been collected to the numbers that were estimated under your current water and sewer master plan, which also developed the current 10-year capital improvement plan, which provides recommendations basically where these funds should be expended towards and what projects they should be allocated towards. Based on multiple internal staff meetings, working meetings, we have been closely reviewing and studying the current comprehensive plan, which is the basis for the master plans that have been put together in 2018 for water and in 2021 for sewer. And based on those master plans, which capital improvement list been developed and the current impact fees been calculated. What has come to staff's attention is the assumptions that were used in those master plans, more specifically growth, development growth and density assumptions are no longer valid. They have changed. And for that reason, the staff's recommendation is, is to go back and start the process of reevaluating the growth projections. And most likely which, if changed, will require re-update of the master plans, which will cause stair step down effect of basically once the land use assumptions are changed, your growth projections are going to be most likely changed, your master plan needs will change, most likely will go down. And your capital improvement list will most likely change. And for that reason, the list of capital improvements that included in the supporting document number four of the last page of my report, as you can see, there are, there's a pretty extensive list of water and sewer system improvements that's been currently recommended under these capital improvement plans. We recommend to put a lot of those projects on hold and reevaluate them prior to committing any of the available impact fee funds towards construction or completion of this project. So it's a two-step, two-part process that we have to follow with essentially update of this or this annual reporting, report that we have to give you. As number one, is we, we went back and summarized the, once again, the collections and operations of the funds. And number two, we essentially encouraging or what we're doing is advising the committee to provide recommendation to council to hold off on committing any of those funds to the current capital improvement list until it's updated as needed. I would be glad to answer any questions, anybody has.
Anybody have any questions for Roman? I've got a couple of, but I don't want to step in front of somebody else's question.
Will the money just sit there until everything's evaluated and have plans?
Yes, unless some of the funds perhaps have been already appropriated on some of the projects that have been already currently under construction or design. So if they've been already previously fully committed, I suspect that those funds are already covered and most likely will be spent. I, I would have to go back and get with finance and rest of staff to take a closer look, identify any of those potential projects that might be already been picked off. Well, and obviously, I guess that brings up a really good point, but probably we will make sure that if any of those projects are on their recommended hold list or evaluation list, it probably should be put on hold. I'll make a note of that, but we'll check on that.
So you're, you're saying that the land use density that was used in these studies is actually lower? Your projection is to be lower than what was assumed in those studies?
Yeah, in short, the studies were based on the ultimate population of 15,000 plus. And looking at what's been developed today and what's left potentially to be developed as a residential, I doubt that we're going to reach those numbers. So the system needs most likely were oversized.
Good. I think he also said in that letter that some of the assumptions, the development assumptions were not in accordance with the current zoning of certain property. I don't think I mentioned anything regarding.
Not a red letter, but.
The land use.
Land, sorry, letter. For existing zoning and land use. Yes, I believe there is, there is a conflict of certain areas where the land use and zoning might conflict. I wouldn't doubt it.
I'd like to, I'd like to address that.
Good.
We have our existing zoning map.
Correct.
And it's got, which is basically the law, what you can and cannot do in everywhere in the city. And then we have a comprehensive plan.
Right.
That doesn't match up with it very well. And we're addressing that at this point. And you're going to see the results of that at a special meeting, hopefully in September, which I think Shannon sent out a request for that. And it's going to be given to you at that time for you to review it. But their land use assumptions that, that we've got on the plan is what they're waiting for. So they know that, well, this area that's shown as multifamily, there's not going to be any multifamily there. And some areas that are shown as single family are going to be more industrial. So everything changes. And so they're sort of waiting on those land use assumptions to come so they can mesh the plan with it. And it's going to, it's going to lower the overall density of the city.
Thank you, Morris. Yes, exactly right.
Well, we, we always, I did question that 15,000 projection anyhow, but. So what I'm understanding that, and I think we've been through this before, that we basically, whoever was doing the study on it was, was using more the comprehensive plan wish list rather than the actual zoning.
Yes, and we're trying to bring it down to reality. We think what reality is at this point, so they can make legitimate cost estimates on how many units they're going to have and what land uses we're going to have.
Well, you have to.
Yes.
Yes, you have. So on, going away.
Even though zoning doesn't constitute, pardon me, comprehensive plan doesn't constitute zoning, but in the case of these studies, as an engineer, you are required to follow the adopted plan.
For sure.
What was at the time placed. And Morris mentioned, we're in the works of updating that comp plan. Once it's officially approved and adopted, we can begin the new growth project updated.
So go back to the process. You, you highlighted it, highlighted it yellow. Which of these projects are you, you said some of them will go away? That the highlighted ones?
No, the highlighted in yellow ones are the projects that are high priority and based on limited engineering review and discussion with staff. We feel, I feel, but we're confident they have to stay on the list. They will not go away, most likely, very unlikely that they go away with the updated capital improvement.
So those are remade. And then you've got that PRA meter station, the sewer project.
Yes.
Highlighted, yeah.
Yes, correct. One sewer related project and yes, five water system related project.
Do any of those need to start in the next six months?
Yes.
Could you highlight those or identify those for us, please?
Ideally, I believe, well, to answer your question is, I know that the staff is also working on right now on finalizing the, I want to be correct in my terminology here, structure of potential debt as necessary to cover expenses associated with these improvements. And I believe right now they're in the works of trying to forecast that, which would be the best and most financial sound plan of which project could be done first, second, third and such, to coincide with the potential definition schedule.
So if we're not specifically allocating the funds in this report to these projects who are reevaluating priorities across projects, is there existing funds to start these?
There are limited funds, yes, available to move forward with at least what you would call non-construction portion of the project. The construction portion of this project will exceed some available funds.
So are we likely to need to have a special CIC meeting to review your revised 10-year plan, impact fees and priorities so that we can get things moving that need to get moving? Or are we?
Absolutely.
Are we looking at, are, at reviewing this at the next regular plan meeting, which would be six months?
As part of the impact fee study update and capital improvement plan update, we are, will be working with you as a committee closely on those updates. I will be reporting to you on a regular basis as we're working towards a plan that everybody's comfortable with, that will be based on the new assumptions. And we would be recommending that capital improvement goes to the council as a TPS. But yes, we will have additional meetings to answer your question. I refer to the special, we'll have additional work.
No, I was just going to say those water projects are all at the pump station back here on Arm.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the south, the south pump station. So, okay, some of this stuff I've seen before from Mike.
Yeah, for example, project number two, upgrades to the pump station, south pump station.
Yep.
They are necessary as needed to meet storage, the new storage capacity that's provided to you there, this elevated tank that's built up, Avondale has the system apparently is fairly capable of refilling that tank.
But that, that project, I know that your engineering from, I mean, you guys are looking at.
Yes.
Again, that putting two pumps out there. Well, anyhow, I think there's, I think there's going to be some pretty significant revision.
Yes, what we were tasked with looking into what needs to be done as needed to expand the pump station to meet the flows that it needs to deliver. And we have discovered that these pumps are going to be somewhat a lot bigger than what anybody was planning for, requiring a larger building. And most likely, the most cost efficient solution to this would be right now. Everybody feels like is moving with expansion of existing building to allow for these new pumps and also as needed to add this on-site storage capacity, essentially another ground storage tank.
Yep.
Would have to do major grading for that site. That site has very complex topography to it, very steep slope. So a construction of very tall retaining walls would be required to push the slope back to clear up enough space to put this storage tank in place. So there is a lot of components associated with this pump station.
I guess what I'm saying is these, the description of the project, our subject change, but also obviously cost here are.
Yes.
Yeah, that costs that pump station, two and a half billion dollars. I guess that's it.
Guys, I have a couple of questions. So as you prepare this report, could you also do a comparison of our impact fees to surrounding communities so we can see where we sit in comparison?
I did not do it as a part of this biannual report, but, and I can do that. And I typically do that as part of the new impact fee study. When you recommend implementation and of new impact fees, I can present you with comparable impact fee rates of others around them as well.
I think that'll be helpful just to confirm that we're in line with our, and the targets that we're setting. This is appropriate, but thank you for doing that. The construction estimate is just a question on the process. So construction costs have obviously changed considerably over the last couple of years. So are, what is, what is the process going to be to make sure we're using the right cost or cost attributes to create these estimates? Are we using historical construction costs? Have those tools been updated so that it's a proper reflection of current labor costs, current material costs, land costs and all of that? I just want to make sure when we get a new estimate, it's not based on some historical figures that are not relevant to today's cost.
It's a very, very valid question. We're going to do our best, those costs are going to be calculated at the time of the new impact fee study publication, which part of that is going to be the new capital improvement list developed. We're going to do our best to utilize present dollar costs on labor, materials, services. And we're also going to provide estimated completion schedule. As you see on this current table, we're given certain target dates. So we're going to try to do our best to essentially inflate those present dollar cost estimates to this future dates to do our best once again to project that those estimated costs would be still valid and sufficient to cover the expenses. But yes, essentially the process would be, we're going to, if we, right now, this update is scheduled to begin as early as next year, this working process. And say we somewhere in the next summer, 2023, we're going to utilize the best, the most recent cost estimates that we have from other projects. If we feel like that particular project, say, won't keep up for another five years, we'll try to utilize the inflation factor of, it would be three, four, five, six or seven percent here. And we can discuss that when we do these updates and use the numbers and assumptions that everybody's comfortable with.
So if you found that you, we were, we had outdated information or estimating tools or something, you would, you would be able to see that and call that out as a, as a risk of the 10-year plan and then invest the right time to get to a better set of estimated tools.
Yes, yes, absolutely. That would be the goal.
All right.
To identify that.
And then as, as that report comes together and we get ready to make the presentation to CIC, if we could get, in your priority list, if you could give us an explanation of why those are the priorities, how that's going to contribute to supporting the growth or demand that our system will require? Just a little bit of education for us on why those are the priorities that we should focus our attention.
Yes, I can make.
Not all of us are, you know, experts in all of, all of the things that flow under our city. So it's just helpful to know, you know, why those are the priorities.
As, as, as the process progresses and updating these programs and plans, like I said, we will have multiple working meetings because I will be seeking your approval of things that I'm incorporating into my study and essentially looking for support form of your recommendation. And those assumptions as well.
And my last question is around development agreements. It appears there was about $300,000 of contributing cost from the city to development agreements, if I understood the report correctly. So do we see any major development agreements that are going to, where we're going to be contributing some of these impact fees or reducing impact fees to developers and projects that are coming up?
I, I believe you reference in the supporting document number three, where it summarizes the water and sewer operations of both funds. Is that correct?
Yeah, there was a.
Where it references.
When you look at the net difference between what was collected and what is available, less the, less the operating spend. There was about three, it appears to me that to be about $300,000 of impact fee that were probably in some way, the developer was relieved of those expenses that we contributed to some support agreement way.
Very good question. On the individual development basis, there were certain provisions were negotiated between the city at the time and the developer. I can give you an example for one of my TARA subdivision. As you can see, there is certain amounts were given back as credits to the developer after the fact that the impact fees have been paid. I was not part of those agreements and speaking in detail about what was planned to be accomplished, but I believe and I suspect that, for example, in that case, perhaps the impact fees were to be credited back to developer in exchange for his contribution for other offsite improvements that were determined at the time to be necessary to support that particular development. Essentially, the developer, it was negotiated and agreed upon, the developer was given a credit on these impacts. He was basically getting the impact fees paid back in return for his commitment to offsite improvements. For example, in the TARA case, it was the offsite storage facility, elevated storage facility, plus some funds that were supposed to be contributed towards the pump station. Now, whether or not it was a fair trade-off, I can't speak on that, but I believe that was the idea and thought. I wasn't part of it once again at the time, but it's what I feel like was driver force behind these credits. Now, there is another subdivision that's not specifically referenced here, but that developer is also getting reduced slash credits on its impact fees. I don't know much about that development. If you like, I can go back and research perhaps, or we can.
I guess my question is more about.
Question?
Yeah, thank you for the clarity on what, what actually transpired there. But I think my question is, as we look to the growth project and we look at our impact fees collecting estimate, if we're going to continue to contribute to developer project, then those fees that we anticipate being there probably aren't going to be exactly as we've estimated to be. So is there any way to, I guess, project how the city might behave with these developments contributing to some of the costs so that we have a better reflect of what our collection estimate looks like?
Um, it, well.
I, I know you're just kind of looking into the crystal ball, how's the city going to behave? But, you know, if, if there is a pattern of behavior that the city contributes in some way to these things, then we could probably somehow reflect that in our 10-year plan.
It would be pretty hard to, I guess, determine whether or not any future potential development would be credited certain amounts. It would be dependent upon current policies at times, also committees act.
And maybe it's nothing more than we call that out as a risk to the 10-year plan. The city that continues, find it useful to contribute to those. And maybe there's just a footnote under the 10-year plan that reflects that that could, could be an impact to that.
We can try to build some sort of provisions if you feel like that's, that's what should be done. It's planning for potential contribution or credits.
Or at least awareness that that could, could impact the collection of.
I, I have the sense that those policies probably not going to be, remain in place moving forward. If you want me to instruct me, if you're trying to tell me when I do my updates, please make sure and don't, I can't or suspect that there'll be any kind of credits or contribution to develop. I will do that. I will basically assume that moving forward, all the impact fees to be collected by the development, by the city from the development will be paid in full. None of it's. development, by the city from the development will be paid in full, none of it would be credited back.
I think that's probably the way we.
Yeah.
Could express the report. Yeah, but, but maybe, you know, the footnote would be, if there is development agreements established, then those fees could be, there could be reduction in total fee collect. Just a footnote. That way, people who look at it, who aren't, who maybe are sitting up here that weren't here today, would be aware of some of the risks to the 10-year plan if there are development agreements to collect. I'm not asking you to estimate what the dollars would be, just more, this, this is a, an item or this is a category of agreements that would, between the city and developers could impact the total cost.
Okay.
And if that's not clear, I would be happy to spend time helping make that clear.
I think I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Asking me to do.
Okay, that's all.
I requested a clean copy so that the chair could sign it if it was approved tonight, and I did not get that prior to the meeting, so the mayor made a lot of copies and he wanted me to pass them out without the draft on it.
Is there a motion to recommend approval of the letter that's been drafted to be submitted to city council?
Yeah, I'll, I'll recommend that we, or I mean, move that we recommend approval of the, I guess we call it the C I A C six-month reporting letter to the council.
If there's been a motion to approve, the letter is written, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion and seconded, all in favor. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And Roman, thank you. Appreciate your willingness to answer all those questions. All right, so our next meeting will take place on November 29th, and that'll be at 6:30 P M. That'll precede the regular P and Z meeting that'll be held that same day. Anything else regarding that meeting date that we need to make people aware of?
They were trying to get back on schedule, so we will keep you updated if there is a need to reschedule that meeting.
Thank you. Okay, nothing more, we are adjourned. Time is 7:04 P M., I think. This clock's not right. It's 10:00 in the morning, so. Turn that around. And the time is 7:05, 7:06 P M., and we do have a forum present this evening. I'd like to start with a couple items of community interest. So, just as a reminder, on Monday, September 5th, the city offices and the Hasslet Public Library are going to be closed in observance of Labor Day. And on Tuesday, October 4th, is National Night Out from 6:00 to 8:00 P M. in Hasslet Community Park. So, just a couple of things to remind you of. Moving on, agenda item three, consider for, for approval the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings from our July 6th special Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Are there any questions, comments, or provisions for those minutes? If there is not, is there a motion to approve them as written?
I'll make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion to approve as written, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Yeah.
And one of, if motion passes, one of ten. Okay, moving on, agenda item four, public hearings and action items. So, 4A, discuss, consider an act regarding the approval of the final plat for the Nichols addition. We're gonna begin with our staff presentation.
Hey, Chairman Kate Eason, members of the commission. This is a plat of land that's actually out in our extraterritorial jurisdiction and adjacent to Blue Mountain Road, and it contains approximately 5.14 acres of land. They're gonna take these five acres and change it into three lots with two of the lots facing onto Blue Mountain Road and one of them facing onto Maxwell Drive. And we had a few comments, and they've actually addressed most of them. There's one remaining comment and that we really need to address and make approval subject to that comment is that they give our city engineer to make sure that the right of way for the future Blue Mountain Road improvements are incorporated. As you can see on the location map, there's, there's sort of a teepee type appearance of, of the property, and when Blue Mountain Road is constructed, it's gonna be a smooth curve that underneath that. So, we really don't know how much right of way until she gets with the, the surveyor gets with our city engineer just to take a peek at that, make sure the plans coordinate with that. The owner of the property is in the audience tonight, if you'll have any questions for her later on. Having said that, that'll, if you have any questions, me, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Sure, please do. And if you would state your name and your address.
My name is Mahaly Mack, and I live at 439 Blue Mountain Road East. How this all started was, my mother passed away, and I had purchased an acre of property from my parents in 1999. And what they did was they surveyed it out, and it became a property description, which, you know, it, according to the Terra Appraisal District, everything's fine, I have my own deed to it. But what we discovered when we tried to do a survey after my mother's passing is that there was a clouded deed, which means, apparently, I'm learning, I'm learning about all of this. The, the properties were never replatted once my mother sold an acre of her property to me. So, even though I currently reside on my one acre of property, there is a problem with the deeds, it looks as if on her deed that that property was never sold to me. And so, the only course of action we could take was to replat the properties. And it's kind of been a lengthy process, and we didn't realize that it was quite as complicated as what it has become. But what we are, what we were given an option to do was divide my one acre that I already own as separate from the remaining three, I think it's 3.14 acres, something like that, it would be more than that. And, or for the same price, the survey company would give us three replats. And, and then it would give us some versatility as to whether one of our other siblings wanted to build a house on the property, and we could all stay together as a family even without our parents there anymore. So, we felt like, well, three for the same price as two would be our best option. So, that's how we came to the point of having three, three plats of this parcel of acreage. And I think that's, so where we're at, can I address the point that you made about the, so, we do know that Blue Mountain Road East has outgrown its road, and we have a, we do have quite a bit of traffic, and we live directly off the road, and people pass on the double yellow line. It's already a danger, my, my daughter is 13, her and her friends, I try to get them to go to the backyard to play, just because I feel like it only takes one second of someone taking their eyes off the road, and they come through the fence and hurt somebody. And so, when I noticed that the, that there was a request for us to provide an allocation of a certain number of feet for the, an additional road improvement project, it, it seemed ordinary at first until when I walked it off, it would be almost one-third of my front yard, and I'm already very close to the road. And thinking of future traffic, even if the road is widened, it concerned me about the dangers that it might be to myself, my family, pets. You guys, you all understand, when you're, right now, the house is close to the road, but to me, there's still a safety element because we're far enough away. I had actually tried to contact the city engineer, and I was told by Sabrina on two occasions that there is no city engineer, and that who I would need to speak with would be the Director of Public Works, David Rogers. And I called and left voicemails that were never returned. So, I wasn't sure really who to speak with about the possible future engineering coordination of a plan for additional rose, road easement. And of course, I'll have other questions at some point, but I have lots of questions about the easement.
To address that question, our city engineer is Mike Anderson.
Okay.
And I can get you his phone number.
Okay, we, we tried multiple times, and the people for the city, I guess, don't realize that there's a city engineer.
They, they should, still.
That can be part of the problem of communication.
Yeah, but we really need to get you to, with Mr. Anderson, to, to discuss that. There may not be any need for right of way, in fact, your house may be further away from the street than what it is now, but we just don't know until we take a look at that and coordinate with our city engineer.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry. About that. When I, I received an email from Mr. Schwanke about the comments on the replat, so to try to, we wanted to get everything done so that hopefully it could be approved. And then, on the, on the part about the easement, it says that Blue Mountain Road to the south is currently being considered for improvement, and that was another question mark for me because we're on the north side of Blue Mountain Road, and I wasn't sure how that would affect us.
Well, it says, Blue Mountain Road to the south is talking about, is south of your property.
Okay.
But it's the entire road.
Okay.
Both the north and the south side of it.
Okay. And it said, the right-of-way requirements may need to be adjusted. So, until I knew for sure the direction that I gave to our, the engineer working on the plans for the replat was, let's, let's get more information before we do anything else. And when we couldn't reach a city engineer, and, and there were a lot of unanswered questions, I, I thought it best that we wait on that and get, maybe get some answers tonight on this.
All right, so, well, let's move to discussion, we're kinda already there anyways. So, I, I, procedurally, question, so, there, we, there's a question, right of way, and it needs to get answered in order to make the final plat act. So, this evening, it, it, this doesn't reflect what, what's gonna be filed, and we, I don't know how long it's gonna take for this review of the right of way to take place, but if we recommend approval on this, it's gonna go to city council, and city council's gonna have to take it up, and then, and if that hasn't been resolved by then, then they're gonna probably deny it or push it back. I, I would like to know that she has some understanding of the pathway to getting a final plat that's gonna be able to be act.
Yeah, I really wish, I really wish you'd have called me, and I could have got you the city engineer's name and number, and, and maybe even got a meeting together with the, the three of us, but it really needs to happen. You can't table it, that.
Yeah.
You just, you just can't table it. You have two actions, either approve it, you know, subject to commons, or deny it without prejudice.
Well.
Which means you could bring it right back.
Can I ask a question on that? Is, if, isn't there a way that we can approve it as it is, and then if later on you guys need additional easement, you're going to have to take it from neighbors also? Couldn't we resolve that at a later date?
That's not the way it works. It's, it's always done through the plating process, and if there's additional right of way that needs it, it'll be dedicated through this process. Is your house on the left or the right side? Is it lot one or lot two?
It's, it's the lot one on the left.
On the left, okay. I'm, I'm gonna think out loud a little bit here. So, yeah, my, my initial thought, I'm not saying this is where we're headed, but my initial thought would be to deny it, okay, don't get scared by that comment, only because it's not act. But I'm also willing to admit, but I'll come right back here as soon as it's done, I'll come back here to P and Z and vote again in special meeting. But that would give us clean dock. I don't know if that's gonna take a week, two weeks, three weeks, or it takes the entire month of September and it comes right back to the end of September. But I would feel much more comfortable about doing it that, than to push it forward as approved, city council has to deny it, it's not placed right, and then it comes right back to the process. This, this way, you know what needs to get done, and you have our commitment to come back and meeting if necessary, such meeting to get. Does that seem reasonable from the, from your standpoint?
Yes, and we're gonna actually have a Development Review Committee meeting on the 7th, and we could invite, it's Mahaly?
It's Mahaly.
Mahaly.
Yeah.
To come to that meeting, because our city engineer always attends that, as well as the rest of the development staff.
And if her engineer wanted to join, just to be.
Yes, we could.
Educated on what needs to occur here, do that?
Yes, yes. That would happen on September 7th in the morning. It could happen at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock.
Okay.
You just need to tell me which one you wanna make. You just need to tell me which one you want to make.
Is, so this is the option that we have right now is to meet with the city engineer on September 7th?
Unless you can meet with him before then.
Okay.
Or, or have your surveyor just contact him and say, what, what, what is it going to be?
Okay. Well, he's happy to do what he needs to do for us. I guess that, what time did you say?
Well, I have an opening at 10 o'clock and an 11 o'clock.
Okay, either one should be fine for me. I'm not sure how it would work with the survey company. Would I just be the one delivering the information to them?
Well, we would prefer to have whoever is going to make the corrections there.
Okay.
As well as yourself.
Okay.
And so I would invite you both. But contact your surveyor and see if he's, he'd be able to meet that, one of those meetings.
I can, I can do that.
I, I mean, are the plans that far along to where they would even have, if somebody told you 1/30 of your property?
I, I walked it off. I, I measured it from the, from the road and walked it and it's approximately one-third of the front yard.
Somebody told you how much?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Schwanke told us it would need to be 110 feet.
Yeah, but that's, that's not necessary.
The total right of way is 110 feet. So normally if it's a straight road, it'd be 55 feet.
Right, we don't know where the, what he's saying is, is that we really don't know where the center line is right now. I mean, if, we've got to establish that thing and that's part of the engineering.
Sure, we, I measured 55 feet from the center line just to, I'm so visual, I wanted to see it myself. And that's when I discovered it was a significant amount of my front yard. But, I'm sorry.
The plans for the road, it's going to be, end up being a, probably a three-lane road. You know, two outside with the center turn lane.
Yeah.
And that kind of pavement width is normally not any more than 36 feet wide. With, you know, 18 foot on either side of the center line, plus the whatever curbs or ditches that we're going to have on the side. So it, it may not be much different than what it is now. And it may be actually further away, just depends on, on the curve of Blue Mound Road, whatever the engineer has.
So what you're saying is what she sees as the center line, probably not.
That is correct. That is correct.
Center line needs pushed further south, create more distance between her front door.
Yeah, just looking at the geometry, basically about the size, if you could put the, the location map back in.
Well, also, you, you know, you're talking about where the right of way would be. He's talking about where, at the curve and, you know, or the, we're not going to, I don't know, roadside ditches or, or anything.
Yeah, because if you go out your front door and go, want to go to the center line the way it is right now.
That's different.
It is different. And actually, the right of way may be closer to your house than what the future right of way would plan to be. We just don't know. We want to make sure that we have the right thing.
Well, if that was the case, then you wouldn't need any.
That is correct.
Yeah. We don't know yet. Point is, is you, this, this got caught in the middle of a design for a roadway.
Okay.
That, that is a unfortunate situation thing, you know, because, but, but you've got to have a pretty definitive idea of where that roadway is going to go before you can plant a piece of property and take right of way because they might take more than they need or not enough. If they don't take enough, then we got a serious problem with the roadway.
And I don't, I don't think there's, you know, we should be regretful about the, make sure your plat is back.
No, no, I, so, yeah.
That, that might, that would be my, my suggestion, that we make a motion to deny. Give you the opportunity to make sure this is accurate. Your property is properly reflected the way it's supposed to be, that's the right of way. And I, again, I make, I hope that rest, well, if that happens, get ready before the next meeting. I, and I just try to find, find, bring this back.
Absolutely.
I have a suggestion or, or question actually. Is there a major hurry on this?
There is not a major hurry, except our mother's been gone almost two years and it's, I feel like we kind of need to, to get things wrapped up.
Is it, is by the end of September, is that fast enough?
Um, I, I would think so. It's my sister Emily came over.
It would, P and Z meet the last Tuesday of the month, but then it would have to go to council. So it wouldn't be wrapped up until mid.
Well, I, I think our engineer knows pretty well where that center line is going to be from their preliminary geometric. And so that's what we'd have to go off with the preliminary.
No, no, and you won't till, maybe for a year or so. But still, you know, he's got the, he knows what the center line radiuses are that needs to be achieved. That he should have some of that center line information already from the flats to the south.
May I ask that question? How, how far along are the plans for the road? Because if it's like a, a year out for the final plans, I mean, is it a preliminary plan that?
We'd be working off a preliminary plan.
Thank you.
But still, he, he knows the geometry of what he needs to.
Are there any other question? And I do, question. So all of the utility easements are properly reflected here as well? Is that correct?
Yeah, all, all the utilities will, will be in the right of way, wherever it ends up being.
And that the property is the back of, that's still it, but the proper, so, building.
Yeah, there, you know, we're not providing sewer to the Maxwell addition. Since it's in the, we can't really. But there is sewer that runs, you know, through the area and up Maxwell Drive and around, but it does not serve Maxwell Circle at all. It has to, according to our agreement with the, our sewer provider, our treatment provider, they have to be within the city limits before we actually offer sewer, that's the reason.
Their motion?
So I'll make a motion that we recommend to city council that we deny this plat until, okay, we're going to go, I'm going to make a motion that we deny the plat subject to final geometric sever of the roadway. And right of way take, necessary right of way take.
I appreciate that. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Yes, there is. We have two things and Shannon's been contacting the Planning and Zoning Commission members and the city council members. They have a spatial meeting sometime in September. And that is to consider a future land use plan that we, that, that we've been working on for quite a while now. And this was mentioned back probably maybe three or four months ago that we were working on it. And we've brought that to fruition through the, through the staff and we're ready to bring it to the city council or, and the P and Z and the city council. And we have a second item that's going to be on your agenda also, and it's a zoning case, which will be for what we call the Old Town area. Old Town Core, Old Town Transition. But it'll be a zoning case that will change the whole outlook of that area. No. That'll, that'll be on your next agenda.
Is, is there anything that we need to be thinking about from our ordinances, you know, workshop topics that we start, I think, spending or investing time in to review and update any of our?
As a matter of fact, I'm glad you mentioned that because one of the things that the staff has been instructed to do is identify the areas that are in our ordinance that need to be adjusted. And I'm developing my list as well as the other staff members and there's quite a few things that, that really need to be adjusted. They're just, just the way they're written right now, well, some of it just flat scares me, the way it's written. And I really can't give you any examples of this. I can give it to you, but I shouldn't give it to you. But we're going to, we're addressing that right now. And so I, that, we get all those together, that really would, needs to be in a, in a workshop item because we're going to be changing a significant portions of the zoning.
And I'm going to be reaching out to the mayor as well on training topics. So we have, that's something we really want to focus on is getting people to do their, do the job they volunteered to do. So if there's a relevant training topic in the agenda, it's like
Yeah, one of the things I've done for many cities is I've put together a, a training video, not a video, but a PowerPoint presentation for Planning and Zoning Commission members as far as, you know, starting with the, you know, ethics and procedures and the way things should be done and what actions you can take on any particular given item. And that's one of the things, I believe the mayor wants me to do when we get the time to do it.
Yes, we've talked about that and I asked if we waited until after the annual appointments were made. Since those are coming up, I've given those that are, terms are expiring, your applications tonight. So if you could get those in, and then once we have our full P and Z commission with the new appointment, we'll be scheduling more training.
Great, thank you. And I think, you know, part of that training should also include how to navigate through our, or what things, what, what elements are contained in what areas? Because I think, you know, somebody who's never looked at that, it's got to be.
That is one of our projects this year coming up. If it's approved in the budget is to do a recodification and reorganize things and make sure it's all updated.
Okay. Anything else for future agendas?
So prepare for September, just buckle your seats, it's going to be exciting.
All right, well, we, we love excitement. We know, we have one thing, at least one thing coming back. Flat. Okay, nothing else? Our adjourned, the time is 7:37 PM? 7:33.